So my name is Junior Fisalde, I'm a council member. I'm an at-large council member, meaning that I represent the entire city of Grand Prairie. So northern Grand Prairie, southern Grand Prairie, I have representatives. My name is Jeff Copeland, I don't believe he's here right now. He's the other at-large member. We do want to thank you all for coming today. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge the dignitaries that we do have here right now. I believe we have Mayor Ron Justin. I'm getting him. We have Councilman McCurry Johnson. We have State Representative Carl Sherman at the back. Right in the back. Oh, my man. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for coming today. I'm very blessed to be on the City Council. I've been on the City Council for about six months now. Thank you for you guys trusting me and giving me the opportunity to serve. I hope we're making you proud and continue to make it proud. So I'll get this little power presentation that I have. So this is our agenda right here. Of course, we're going to go through the welcome of people as they're coming in. And we'll let all of our different departments speak. Our department heads will obviously begin today after I give a short presentation. So I was elected about six months ago, June 5th. I'm very blessed to say that we've got a lot of good work done here in Grand Prairie in that short period of time. It was not all by myself, not all by the words of the city person on the council. We have a great council, great leaders on the council that are inspiring, will be looking at me, giving me the opportunity to grow, giving me wisdom. So I'm very grateful to be here, as well as we have great city staff, great city manager. My name is Steve Dyson, he's back right there. We have really good leaders. We have our deputy city manager, Bill Hill, right over there. I'm sorry, the city manager Cheryl Envy is here. We have great leaders that are giving me the opportunity to grow in this mission. But one thing that I first of all want to talk about is community engagement. So I think that every council member, every leader, no matter what level of city government you serve on, you have to find different ways to engage and interact with the community. And I've been very blessed and lucky to have a council that is very supportive of me and these veterans and cooperatives collaborates with me on these activities. So first thing I do want to talk about is whenever I was first elected in July, we hosted a community picnic celebration for residents to come out, learn about different foods, different types of foods from different countries, from parts of the world, as well as embracing our American food, such as hot dogs, hamburgers. We have some Nigerian food there as well. You can see we have a lot of fellowship, a lot of engagement, especially during this COVID-19 pandemic that we're slowly overcoming. It was good to see our neighbors come together, meet other neighbors that live in the city, just embrace each other and have a really good time. So I'm really grateful to see that. I see that we have council member Jordan Clemson just walking in at the back. Yeah, that's why I think it's really about having guests like this. I plan on doing this every year. Another event that I was able to host alongside with Grand Prairie ISD, Grand Prairie Chamber of Commerce, Raise Your Hand Texas, and Grand Prairie PTA, Board of PTA. And that was a Halloween fest that we allowed children and other residents to come, dress up in their Halloween costumes, come and get candy, and just enjoy a good time outside while kind of socially distancing, attempting to socially distance. As you can see, people are dressed up in their costume. Me, I was LeBron James, if you didn't know. I had a couple of kids that would come up to me, say, can I take a picture with you? I'm thinking they want to take a picture with me because I'm a councilman. I'm like, what do you think I am, so you're LeBron? I said, oh, okay. So that's really fun. This really gets you engaged, interacting with different levels, in different events, and letting them know what we are doing in this city. Next thing, I want to list a few legislative achievements that we got to get, we got done as a council together. Now, I'm really happy that we were able to be in these first six months. And first thing is, on August 17th, we decided as a council to vote in favor of renaming 19th Street to MLK Junior Boulevard to honor the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for all the work that he did with a couple of civil rights and civil justice to give African-Americans and all people in this country an opportunity to be free and to engage in politics and government and have their voice to be heard, as well as getting rid of other things that were holding people from the back. And this is a few pictures of our entire council and other city officials coming together and some pastors and other leaders in the city coming together to embrace this monumental achievement that we got done here in Grand Prairie. The next thing that I want to speak about is a microtransit ride-sharing program that we passed here in the City Council. So as we know, here in Grand Prairie, we don't have a bus system, we don't have a train system. So for people that don't have a car, it is a bit difficult to get around. You have to either call Uber or call Lyft. Sometimes the prices for a trip or a sunrise are a bit exorbitant and hard for a working-class individual to get around. So our council and our city staff specifically, I don't know if he's here, if he's here. Okay. Our Transportation Director Walter Schumek, I'll try to find you, you're right over there. He helped us pass this program. This is a legislative, has this program that will allow all Grand Prairie residents, anyone who's in the city, even if you're visiting, that you can travel to any part of Grand Prairie, whether South Grand Prairie, North Grand Prairie, for between the price of $30, $50 cents, it's $4 per ride. If you compare that to Uber or Lyft, that's like $15 a trip. So that will give people the opportunity to get around at a lower and inexpensive price, to give them the same opportunity to make it, even if they're not able to have a car. The program is not underway yet, there's still some other things that we can do to get it done, but Walter will speak about that later. But to show y'all that the city is definitely working, we have a great city staff, we have a great city council and mayor that are putting in good work to get things out of this community. And lastly, I'll let the mayor speak about this more so, but we cut property taxes here in Grand Prairie for the first time in 20 years. It was a very monumental achievement that the City Council did. I'll let the mayor spend on it if he's able to, because he did have an incident with his mouth, he got injured a few weeks ago. But we thank God that he's in great health. I'll let him expand on it. We cut property taxes, we did a half cent property tax cut for every hundred dollars that we assessed the property value. The mayor will talk more about that. But by saying that, I'll let the mayor come to the stage and say a few words and go from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Junior. It was kind of, I was wired up for three weeks. The good news is I lost 15 pounds. The bad news is I was wired up for three weeks. Tree cutting accident, the tree fell and Kimberly rubbed and hit me in the jaw and knocked me out, broke my jaw, 21 stitches. Crazy, I don't know if it could have been somewhere else. You know, it could have cut my nose, could have got me here. So I'm fine. And I'm going to try to keep 10 of those 15 pounds off. You'll see how I know. I then fall in love with Chick-fil-A, but I'll shake some. So Junior, you know, I'd like to work to talk pretty good with my mind, but he had a video just in case. And I know there were some people kind of happy, I wasn't worried. Mike got to run a meeting, and I, all my mayor bro teams get to run a meeting, and he got to run a meeting, did a great job running the meeting. So let's talk about the property. The last 40 years, we have given seniors and residents of homes, homeowners, tax cuts through the homestead extension, through the senior extension, through the senior free smokes. If you're over 65, your, yours is frozen. Unless you get an exemption, you need to apply for that. It's frozen. Only way you'll pay more taxes is if you have one another story. But your house, if you're over 65, and if you're on homestead, you get a big homestead exemption. But I, my fellow council, I announced back in April, I thought it was time to finally... Sometimes people don't understand the homestead exemption or the cap or things like that, but they do understand the overall tax rate coming down, don't you? When you drop that, you understand that. So we dropped a half a penny, as Junior said, first time in 20 years. It means about $8, $900,000 to get into our budget. So going forward, as the budget is looking for this coming year, I'm hopeful that we can do the same or something similar. The decision the council has is, do we give up? Let's say you're going to cut property taxes and you, well, no, this, you're going to cut property taxes by a million, you're going to cut the budget by a million dollars. For the homeowner, it's better to give you that million dollars to an increase in homestead exemption, because it means more to you personally, because you're not giving that tax deduction to the businesses and property owners and things like that. But sometimes it's just best to give everybody a tax break, that apartment, that own businesses that invest in your city. And so that's why we chose to do the half cent. I'm confident that we can do something again next year. The decision is, if you're going to do a homestead exemption, you have to do it earlier in the year versus dropping the tax rate. You dropped the tax rate that last meeting in September. If you're going to do anything with a homestead exemption, you got to do it, I think, April issue or something like that, but it's earlier, so we got to look at the numbers fast. But I'm proud to say that we did, for the first time in 20 years, drop the tax rate a half a penny. Junior, do you want me to go ahead and talk about the epic now? Well, I've got that. Let's talk about it. Let's talk about the council level. You're very fortunate. I'm more fortunate than you, because I get to be the mayor of a great council. You benefit from it, folks, because we don't do infighting. Do we agree 100% on everything? No, there's nine of us. I remember, I was on a pastor search meeting one time, there's seven of us. One gentleman came in, I pray to God, I know this is the man that we need to call. The Lord wouldn't tell me that same man. I went to, well, no pastor here in town, Reverend Pope Keane, he said, Ron, that's why there's something about you on there. There's nine of us. We all had different ideas, different viewpoints, different upbringing, different vision. But again, G, one thing, we all had the vision, we want Grand Prairie to be better for everybody. So where we may disagree on minor points and things like that after the vote's taken, we're one. We're a good cohesive council, and I love working with this council. I would not be mayor if I didn't have a great staff and a great council to work with. So let's talk about Epic. That was the other thing Junior wanted me to speak on, Epic. I was interviewed by a student at UNT today, we assumed, what's changed for the city of Grand Prairie in the last 10, 15 years? Mayor Proton, Bill Bosky and I were in a meeting the other day, and the former mayor of Duncanville, talking more than he should have. He did say, Grand Prairie has done more to reinvent itself in the last 10, 15 years than any city in the whole BFW area. I was happy it can't further go, but at least we went. I grew up, I knew what we were called. People didn't want to do here, didn't want to send their kids to school here, didn't want to invest here. Demographics, still, I got so tired of demographics. The vision was once, the Georgia Bus and Turker Pack could be through, I knew, we knew that was our last chance. But we had to have mine from our citizens, because we tried to get Hurricane Harbor or to build some here, we tried to get Elijah Falls to come here, they chose other places, they chose Mansfield, they chose other places. I said, well, we're going to build our own damn water park. I didn't want to build a water park for taxpayers, buddy. But I wanted a water park, because citizens deserved it, and no one else will tell them. And the citizens approved that bond election overwhelmingly to build the Epic, Epic Waters and Playground Adventures. Folks, if you had kids, take them to Playground Adventures, especially if they're a kid with disabilities. Take them to Playground Adventures. So right in 2014, in my state of the city, Amy's coming in, I remember getting to my state of the city, and she had the brochures at every table. Remember that, Amy?
Yes, sir.
You had them at every table, my vision for Epic. I said, get away, get them out of here, I don't want them to know about this until I presented. I'll never forget that, my Junior. Amy and staff pulled them off, but y'all saw the vision in 2014 and overwhelmingly supported that $75 million bond package. They started the Epic, Epic Waters, Playground Adventures. That was the Kickstarter, what we're seeing out there now. I'm here to tell you, we wouldn't have got IKEA had the city not stepped up and done that. We were bidding it, yes, we worked it, our, our, our even wanted to put where their summit is now. You know, the big summit, not our summit, their summit. Hey, it's Florida Prairie, are y'all married yet? I feel my congratulations. She was from the Prairie, now she's married, it's Florida Prairie. They were going, going after when the summit is now, IKEA chose our location, because I think because of the Epic, Epic partially had room to expand, they don't want to be on the island by themselves, they want other things around them. The Epic was huge, the IKEA, but that stamp of approval that we were to be reckoned with it. They're saying it's a regional draw, people come around. So then, IKEA got off the slow, started war, I said, you know, what's going on? Well, then they took off, and they were in their circles, they were called the little engine, because it's a smaller footprint than some of the others, and it exceeded their expectation by 150%. Now, that doesn't mean they exceeded everybody else's sale by 150%. They were the top against their forecast, top worldwide. They exceeded their forecast by 150%, so other people started taking notice. So the next puzzle, piece of the puzzle was hotels, convention center restaurants. That's what's undergoing right now, they're all closed. Chicken and Pickle, 77,000 square feet, Chicken and Pickle will open for a soft opening, December 17th. December 17th, that's a Saturday night, Friday night, is it the 15th or 17th? Oh, 17th, soft opening, 17th. That's the opening, grand opening deal. Just invitation only. But that's when they kind of, and they opened soon after that. Yeah. But 70,000, 7,000 square feet. One in San Antonio, one here, to fix the bill of going to Great Run. That was a big step to get Chicken and Pickle. So on city property, they're spending about $13 million of their own money. We got leasing. So what else is going on out there? We're building two hotels in the conference center, pan sites for restaurants. The restaurants will be open next year. It ain't early spring, maybe summer, early fall.
Hopefully late summer.
Late, late summer, the restaurants, that's Vodora, you need to Google Vodora. A Finch, it's used, it's similar to Stir, same owner, different name, same food. Luton Island Barbecue, the founder of Chili's, Larry Levine, wants to do something with barbecue, like he did with Chili's, and take it, take Texas wild worldwide, he's putting in Luton Island Barbecue. We'll have a food court with serious pizzas and some other moderately priced things. You'll be able to, we're going to have a light show on the lake. Two hotels, a conference center, join them. The hotels in the conference center won't open up until around 2023, but folks, they're, they're, they're working on them right now. That's what y'all approve. With the others, the next $75 million bond package, if they're not raised taxes, will not raise taxes, because it generates, the state gives us back about $25 million over 10 years for building. It's, the state is helping us build. They give us back, there's 6% high tax for 10 years for everything's generated around it within 1,000 feet. So that's when they give us back about $25 million. So that's the update on the Epic. In closing, I will tell you, around next door to Playground Adventure, next door to our Prairie Falls, my lower lip still a little swollen, can you tell? Boulder Adventure Park. Your kids are going to want to go there. You're going to want to drop your eight-year-old off there and then go to Vodora. Chicken and Pickle. Rope scores, skating rink on vinyl, lot of ice, laser tag, everything. 70-foot high ceiling, Boulder Adventure Park. We're working on some things next to IKEA that we cannot announce. I and staff feel fairly confident that maybe all three will come, maybe none, I don't want to say, we're confident that some of them are going to come. I don't think, I think we'll make it all three up. One of these days, you're going to say, those are the things the mayor was talking about that night. And it's not going to just be a drive-through Dairy Queen. No, you're going to know, woo, that's what the mayor was talking about. They're big, folks, would not be coming if it weren't for what's going on there and the amount of revenue that those businesses that are there are already generating. IKEA's doing great. First watch does as much or more business than the first watch in Mansfield and ours for cat size. This is from the general manager, it's over both of them. Our main event has the number two kitchen in the US behind Atlanta. The number two kitchen. Little Grand Prairie, main event, number two kitchen. Folks, we had peanut demand, they acted like our money wasn't green. We had peanut demand, I was tired driving to Arlington, weren't y'all? I'll still go over there for a pee of change, probably next week, I'm ready for some. That's it for me, buddy. You got any videos you want me to add?
That's my mom's side, you know that's.
Oh, one of those pictures. Out at the soccer field. Where our first victory was. There you go, Junior.
Epic and the property tax cut. So coming up next, we're going to have our police chief, Daniel Sesley, he'll give us an update on what's going on in the city crime-wise, keep us safe, we'll see what he has to say.
All right, so you got Chicken and Pickle and even Pee of Change on the last presentation, I'll come and ask you to keep it up. I want to talk about three primary things, and I'll try to be as brief as possible to leave time for questions. I want to talk about crime rate, I want to talk about a crime fighting strategy, and then probably most importantly, I want to talk about a program called COPE. If you don't, it please before you leave, there's some brochures back there, pick one of these up, it's got a lot more detail, it's worth your time. So let's quickly talk about crime decrease. Last year, crime was down 8%. It was the lowest crime drop, or the lowest our crime has been in the last decade. I was concerned, thank you, appreciate that. Put some hands in the back of the room, give us applause, get y'all going. The good news is, I was a little concerned, because it was during the height of the COVID, that maybe that might be driving some of the crime decrease. As I stand here today, and I'm going to knock on wood, hoping I'm Jason, we're down another 10%. Let me tell you in sort of a crime fighting strategy, how we're able to accomplish some of those goals, and what we're looking to do in the future. So the Grand Prairie Police Department is very heavily driven on data. We examine everything to try to help us drive our research. So we've looked at crime over three, five, and 10 years, we've looked at calls for service, and rather than being very effective at solving crime after it occurs, our strategy has been to be very proactive in preventing crime before it occurs. So what we've been able to do is identify areas all throughout our city that has been historically driven by high call volume, citizens calling up, saying we've got a problem here, here, here. Based on that, we've identified half a dozen, or probably a dozen sites throughout the city that have higher drivers of calls. 120 times a day, 24-hour period, we drive police officers into those areas. What we're finding is that just by having officers present, their cars there, driving around, taking reports, their acting is a very effective deterrent, and the crime doesn't happen in the first place. So way, way down, that's one strategy we're doing. The other thing we're doing is what I'm calling, my team doesn't like want to say this, but what I'm calling is a crime vaccine. So what we found by looking at the data is certain types of crimes go up during certain times of year in certain areas, right? It seems common sense, but what happens when you got a lot of seasoned cops and they all think they know where crime happens, but nine times out of 10, they're wrong. The data shows us something different. And so when we look at the data, we can figure out where those crime spikes are happening, what times of year, and what times, or what locations. And then we can flood those areas with signage, like, please lock up your cars. We can put officers into those areas, being the visual intern, we can put undercover officers in those areas to catch people. We even fly drones at night in some of our neighborhoods where we're having problems with vehicle burglaries, and that has been a significant driver of a reduction in crime. So those are, those are just two theory or two strategies that we've done that work very well. And then a third piece of this council that we're working on presently is risk trading modeling. What that is, is there are segments of our city where our children seem to be victimized more than others. We are prioritizing them. So while our, our crime is not showing a unusually high amount of child victims, we're seeing areas where the children are being victimized more than others. So in those areas, we're tagging in a lot of additional resources, like our, our child infancy programs, we're partnering with school districts to get counseling there, and a whole host of other things to try to push into those areas and get those families help they need. That is in infancy, but we're just getting started, because what we don't want is even though we've enjoyed some success, even one victim is too many. So that is, that is your crime in a nutshell. Let me talk about COPE very quickly. Mental health is a significant issue right now in law enforcement, and it isn't just an issue for police officers themselves, but it's also a significant issue for our residents here in the city. What I mean by that is, there are oftentimes people that are in mental health crisis that don't have the resources in anywhere else to turn but to dial 911. So once they dial 911, they get a police officer who historically is not trained, or they don't have the same level of acumen that a practitioner would have. And to compound the problem even more, it is, it is by far one of the most dangerous intersects that you have when someone's in mental health crisis and a police officer, because very often they don't have a clear understanding of the consequences of their actions. On the flip side of that coin, you can't expect your police officer to allow themselves to be subjected to deadly force because someone's in crisis. So it's a terrible situation to be in. And what we've recognized in the city of Grand Prairie, which by the way, to my knowledge, no one else in the country has a program like this, is that in order to be effective, we have to have that intercept far before we're in crisis. So let me tell you what that looks like. If someone in your family or someone you know is suffering from mental illness, my ask is that you sign them up for our COPE program, it costs nothing. What that will cause, what that will trigger is, we have licensed medical professionals on our staff, two, we got a third one on the way, thanks to our City Council. And what they do is they will meet with those families, and they will get information about those, your mental health needs. Why is that important? Well, if an officer gets dispatched to, let's say, a suspicious person by the name of John Doe, before they even get there, they're going to have an alert on their computer that says, Mr. Doe is suffering from paranoid schizophrenia, his triggers are bright lights or loud noise, his family members are Jane and Tina Doe, and our team can start working that problem and tagging in family members before we even get there. We also know it's a terrible idea to turn on lights or be loud, right? Or other times, maybe they're hard of hearing, and we need to increase our volume, right? So that's just one piece. We also flag the license plate, so if they're, they're uncommunicative, we can know who they are based on the license plate or their address. So that's one way in which we're able to get proactive information during the crisis. But as I mentioned, we got to get beyond, before the crisis, right? So the other thing we do is, once we've identified someone who's in our COPE program or someone who we've had to take for emergency psychiatric care, now our, our... now our, uh, our crisis response team, which consists of mental health police officer, a licensed medical professional, and now thanks to our fire chief, a paramedic. What they will do is proactively go out and check in with individuals saying, listen, um, you had some issues before, what can we do to help you prevent you from having problems again? Sometimes it's a dollars and cents problem and they can't afford their medicine. We can put them together with some of our volunteer organizations to make sure they get their medicine. Sometimes we're able to just establish a rapport so that when we have problems, our crisis response team is the ones that answers these calls. They already know the officer and the therapist when they get there. So they can say, look, Mr. Doe, what's the problem today? And they already know us and rapidly de-escalate the problem. And then the third thing it did, it does, is it's reduced dramatically our need to do emergency apprehensions for mental health issues. So, uh, our psychiatric issues are way down in the results of the program. This is saving people's lives. So I would encourage you, please, if you know anyone that has mental health challenges, pick up the brochure, it costs nothing. All of the information, by the way, is, uh, HIPAA protected through our C J system. So it's not shared, but it is, uh, shared with the police officer that's responding to make sure they have critical information at a critical time. So that is COPE. In a nutshell, that's your crime decrease in a nutshell. That's our crime fighting strategy in a nutshell. And I'll bet them we're going to have questions after, right sir? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Before we continue, I want to make sure that we recognize our Dallas County Hospital, Ed Wright is in the background over there. Coming up next, somebody out there. Oh, yeah, we have, we have our judges just walked in. Give him a hand, please. Coming up next, we're going to have our fire chief, Robert Knight. Y'all give him a hand, please.
I just want to reiterate what the mayor said earlier. Uh, I've been your fire chief for about nine years and this is my fourth city. And in the other three cities, the council was typically a five, four vote on everything. Every, some of them were four, four, with the mayor being the toddler on every. And I will tell you that it's, it is refreshing and it makes you want to stay here as a fire chief, when you have a council that doesn't always agree, but can get along and make the city great once. So I just want to reiterate, Mayor, someone that's been in another city, this is not so. Uh, a few things that cover the entire city. Fire Station Three off of, uh, 161 and Marshall is finally open. It was due to open in March. We kicked it to April. We kicked it to May. We kicked it to June. And then I just took the mayor's advice and said, we'll open up in 2021. And we finally opened up. You would not believe the challenges with contractors and supplies getting stuff built right now. But it is open. Fire Station Three is right off the highway and basically serves the entire city because of their access to just about everything. So that is really good. Uh, second thing is the dreaded COVID. The last several town halls, I've gotten the privilege, sometimes it's a painful privilege to give the crowd an update on COVID. Well, for your city operations, we are full of it. We really did not stop, uh, in the past several months. We're still doing our best on distancing and masking in the office. But for the most part, we are moving forward with the pandemic, hopefully in our rearview mirror. We do know there's a new variant out there. It is very confusing on which to believe, whether how contagious or how serious it is. More to come on that. But you got to understand, being in a city that's split by two counties in the state of Texas, in this country, the messaging can be conflicting. We don't, uh, we try to be consistent with Grand Prairie. Steve Dye, our city manager, has been very consistent with staff. But for you as a citizen, just know everything's open. All services are going forward. Uh, we are not doing the vaccine clinic again. We will not be doing a, uh, a booster clinic because CPS, Walgreens, Tom Thum, they all are readily available for anybody in this room at this point. And the last thing I wanted to talk on was your ambulance service, or what we call EMS, which is emergency medical services. Not all of our departments run the ambulance service, yours does. We have eight ambulances that cover your city. Now, think about the city of Grand Prairie, a lot of you can picture it in your mind, but it's about 30 miles long. We touched Vegas in Midlothian. It's hard to believe where we're right today. Grand Prairie touches Midlothian, but it does. And we touched the airport just about. So think how long that is. And it's only a few miles wide. Well, from a transportation and a public safety standpoint, that is a challenge covering that much district. So you have eight ambulances covering 200,000 people on all that area. It's not very many. But you also have 230 paramedics in your fire department. So if you call 911, if we were to call 911 from this very room because you're having chest pain, you're going to get a fire engine or a fire truck and an ambulance. There is a very good chance the fire engine's going to be here three, four, five minutes, but several minutes before the ambulance, because the ambulance may be coming from somewhere else. But it doesn't matter because whoever walks in that door, every person in that door coming through your door will be a paramedic. We will have all of our equipment, just like the ambulance, all of the drugs we need. So in our system and our model, we treat you with our fire engine and fire truck and we transport you with the ambulance. So you may be on a call where it took the ambulance 10 minutes. I'm okay with that as cheap because I know a paramedic was by your side and through. And the ambulance just becomes a taxi. So it's very important to understand your EMS system. Another common complaint, and I just want to touch on this, because this may affect one of you, we can't transport you to wherever you want to go. I would love to be able to give you a concierge service of taking you to anywhere you want to go and now forward. We can't do it because I just mentioned we only have eight, eight ambulances. So we have what we call the closest, most appropriate program. If you're down south, you're going to be able to go to Methodist Mansfield or MCA Arlington. Uh, if you're up north, you've got Irving, you've got AMH, you may have MCA. If you're on the east side of town, you have Methodist Hospital in Dallas. And then you got all the Arlington. So we try to give you some choices. But if, if you were to have your issue right now and you told me, you know what, I want to go to Parkland, it's going to be difficult because we're going to take you to the closest, most appropriate. Or we've even had Medical City of Dallas, they made our Medical City of Dallas. It's off Point Road in North Dallas. Our ambulance will be gone for two and a half hours. So that is our policy. I know it does give you some conflict when you want to go to a certain place, but please understand it's for the greater good. So I will be here later for questions. There's always some EMS and COVID stuff and we're, we're good.
AMH is our economic development director. I want to recognize our councilman, John Boebest, who just walked in. Actually, my councilman, I live in this district. But also I want to re-recognize Judge Kenneth Sanders. I missed him when he first walked in, so I'll mess him right back there. Recognize him. Thank you, thank you, guys. So next up, we have our economic development director, Marty Weir. Going to give us some good information as to what's going on in the city.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a, it's a pleasure to get the opportunity to work on your behalf, day in and day out, on a number of things. And we think it's important we share a number of the good things that are going on and likewise talk a little bit about what your council has been doing together to try to direct quality development. Uh, I would be remiss, though, before I do, if I didn't recognize the two individuals that were up here before me because, let's face it, when it comes to economic development for businesses who want to invest in our city or ones we're trying to keep in our city, they're very interested in being in a safe place, number one. And you've heard already that we're achieving, doing some tremendous things to achieve that through our police department. But as well, to have what our fire department's provided us in years faster than ISO rating of one, which ends up not only benefiting those businesses, but puts money back in your pocket too because your insurance rates are able to be the lowest they can be as a result of that. So very grateful to follow those two individuals. What I want to do is, is again, take you through just a few items in a PowerPoint. This is a policy position that our council had adopted about three, two and a half, three years ago now. Uh, and that they just recently reaproved and strengthened. And focused in on a couple of things. You may know that, you know, cities are somewhat limited by what can be done by virtue of the thing called zoning. Uh, and then as well, I'm going to show you here in a second, something that's known as a future land use map that's just recently been updated. This particular policy position allows us to take the things that the council has said they prefer to see built in our city, share it and hand it out to developers upfront so that we can be proactive and aggressive in telling them, this is really what our council prefers. As an example, because let's face it, we're getting a lot of it because they're knocking on our door and it's being invested in a lot by banks that are seeking to fund it multifamily. Uh, if, if zoning's not there, for instance, our council's made very clear, they would prefer not to change zoning of commercial zoning for multifamily. That's in the statement. I've got copies of this, I'm going to put it in the back if you want to see it. I'd invite you to pick it up. That's something we can put in the hands, can be proactive and aggressive in putting in the hands of developers who contact us and say, hey, you know, how does your council stand on that? We make that very clear to them upfront, that that's something our council has taken a position on. The future land use map that I mentioned, well, Marty, what is that? Uh, we got freezing nickels here recently through our planning department to update what could be built or what appears the market would recommend be built that may not totally match up with zoning. It gives your council some way to be able to negotiate with developers potentially, uh, that come in because we can point to, hey, either follow the zoning or take a look at the future land use map. This is what a third party group has come in and evaluated our city and has recommended how we can be built out. What's interesting, and what you see to the left is the north. In the middle is the central. To the south includes not only, uh, the area that you heard Chief Fife talking about, but also goes all the way down into our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Can be zoned until it's annexed in, but we can still say, this is what we think it would be developed like. And it gives us a way to be able to guide development, uh, as we talk to people. Economic development normally works almost routinely on commercial development. But we recognize there's an opportunity. When we did this future land use map and in the direction of the city manager, Steve Dye, that we could maybe use that interim time and as well with the moratorium that the council had at the start of the year on multifamily to say, when they called timeout, to say, let's look at some other properties. Can we bring in quality residential? It's the type of thing our citizens have been asking for and our businesses, uh, like Lockheed Martin Missiles and Fire Control would like to see us have available. So, you know, we share the kind of things, as the mayor has mentioned many times and council members have repeated, that it's Grand Prairie's time. We've pointed out to people that we've gotten out the 11th wealthiest zip code in an area to the south by the Estes Peninsula. We've got, uh, we're the number three best city for jobs according to wallahub.com. We're the 72nd safest city, number two in all of North Texas. Number one best city to retire, second best city to stay, in terms of staycations. And we're putting this data in front of quality residential developers too. We're pointing out the attractions in North Grand Prairie. You probably can't see all that, but we, we included some properties. We talked them about what's available in the central part of town. And then we, we go out and meet with these brokers and developers and talk about South Grand Prairie and the opportunities. You know, we, we brought out, there's some quality residential in our city already. And there's some ones that we can maybe look at in our cities around us in Mansfield. Some of the things you see in Midlothian. Uh, some townhomes that are downtown in Waxahachie, brand new, that are being built. And even some things that are constructed, uh, more like, uh, row houses in Irving and what you see in Arlington in the Caribbean. You know, that we can, can look at some of our properties, our, the properties that were being slated maybe for other uses and encourage residential developers to take a look. And we've had some success and are grateful that some are starting to talk to us and wanting to explore that a little further. Another item that's on the agenda is to give you a little information about our conversations with the city of Mansfield. Uh, in, in particular, for an area that's kind of been branded, for the most part, down there, South Gate. Uh, there's a real opportunity with all the interest that's coming in development down there where 360 intersects with 287 and beyond. Uh, that we think that we can essentially put in place some quality standards and create something akin to what is in Los Colinas. Not everybody realizes Los Colinas is in Irving. We think South Gate can take on a similar field. They don't care what city it's in, whether it's in Mansfield or Grand Prairie, but it's quality. And it's the type of thing that people would want to see. So we think it's important that we work together, we hired a group to come in and do a, an analysis. This is available on our website in our planning department. I'd be glad to link you to it if you have a question. I could, I could tie you to that staff. But it's looked at a north area study and then the south area and made some recommendations that we look at trying to preserve and integrate natural assets, establish some scenic gateways, encourage alternative high quality housing, like I showed you just a minute ago. Focus on destination driven development and, and bringing in a number of other assets. So I would encourage you to pull that up and take a look at it. We mentioned we were going to talk to you briefly about our one opportunity zone in the far north part of the city, all around the census tract that's shown here by our entertainment district and over to the west, over to State Highway 161. Uh, that was approved back in 2017 and gives us some opportunity too where the, uh, folks that we were negotiating with, it was, the council approved and was announced last year about this time, uh, the conversion of our minor league baseball park for cricket, the first major league cricket stadium in the country. As well, uh, as has just been announced last month, the 2024 International Cricket Council World Cup for a, a shorter game called T20 is going to be in the U.S. and the West Indies. We think it's very likely that a number of those games are going to be right here in our city coming 2024. They're going to convert that stadium, as you saw it, to being something more akin to what this looks like. And, uh, we're real excited. Those plans have been approved, they're getting ready to get under construction in January and hope to have the first cricket exhibition next fall. And then, uh, you heard the mayor talk about everything that's going on on 161. I just want to jog you, be able to get a picture of with chicken and pickle and the construction that's taking place. With, this is what the facility in North Kansas City looks like. Uh, this is what they had laid out for us. And you can see up here to the, the far north, uh, that facility in October on the 14th, what it looked like. With all of, as he described to you, the hotels that are going to be built over here. This is the underground parking facility and those retail and restaurant sites that are under construction. You can see the pads there. This is, uh, an idea of what the hotels are going to look like. Here's what the, the door has already gone vertical here just in recent weeks and what it's going to look like. And so, uh, you'll also see, as he mentioned, Luke Nine Barbecue. If you haven't been to Asia Times Square lately on Pioneer Parkway, I would encourage you to, they've done some tremendous addition in the past year with a, uh, a new plaza, with a new food court, with a number of new offerings. And as well with this building that's planned, and as you can see, it's already under construction. And they're talking about the people that they've signed to bring into that facility. Really exciting times. They're right next to our border with Arlington on Pioneer Parkway with additional things to come. Uh, you may have seen that Zavala's Barbecue Downtown just recently got the designation, one of only 50 barbecue restaurants selected in Texas Monthly's about every two years, top 50. There's Joe and Kristen Zavala, we're very excited for them and happy. And they've just announced plans to expand their facility. And then I wanted to show you what's nearing completion, not far from where we are right now at Carrier in Pioneer Parkway. Uh, a year ago this time, it was announced that right next to DB's, uh, Spross Farmer's Market's going to go. And let me close with this before I hand over the mic to the next group. And I, and we're going to, of course, answer questions when we're done. But one of the things we're about to do, that's been a real priority of our city manager, is to start taking a close look at how we can assist some of our interior, uh, centers that maybe have grown a little tired or weary and need a, uh, revitalization and rejuvenation. This is one at Clarice and Third, one of several that are at that intersection that we think would be prime for us to come in and try to help improve and bring in better tenants. I'm going to be hiring a new business manager that'll be starting with us in early 2022. And one of the main focuses is to work with redevelopment and reinvestment, not only, for instance, on a site like this. And one of the main focuses is to work with redevelopment and reinvestment, not only, for instance, on a site like this, but also downtown. So we're excited and we're gonna be able to at least raise the bar and improve neighborhoods in some of our existing facilities too. Councilman.
Thank you, Marty, so much. So before I introduce our next speaker, I want to make sure I recognize a former council member that served here in Grand Prairie back in the day. Who's actually the second African American to ever serve on a city council. Angus Edhamfield, he's standing right, sitting right over there, please let me recognize him.
The director of the council, he's sitting right here. Black, Lee How. Number three.
Thank you, African American City Council member, Diaco. Thank you, Milwaukee, you want to recognize me, gentlemen, because Kurt White, this was the fourth and fifth African American to serve on a city council here in Grand Prairie. And without the work that they did back in the day, other civil rights leaders did back in the day. I know I wouldn't be able to stand here, I know Kurt wouldn't be able to be a city council member. So we're very grateful, give them one more hand.
Thank you, Marty, for giving all the fun and cool projects. I'm your director of engineering and public works. So just a brief rundown of all the projects or departments we've got on engineering. I've got capital improvement projects, permitting, stormwater, plan review. And on the public works side, I've got streets, drainage, brush program, signals. And then I've also got utilities, which is water wastewater utility building. So I do have some system directors help me with that. So if you ever have any issues with any of those things, please feel free to call me. What I'll talk about today is our street maintenance program. And mainly just to talk about the different funding aspects of that. I realize we have over 800 miles of street that we have to maintain, so there's never enough money to maintain. But city council and CMO is gracious enough to give us a pretty good amount of money to maintain what we can with what we've got. So we have two different programs we use for funding. One of them is our 4% sales tax. City passed a vote a while back, 4% of all the sales tax goes to street maintenance. That generates the neighborhood of about 13 million a year. We try to divvy that up among the six different council districts. So typically, we will hit two to three streets per district. And that's not a long linear run, but it is at least a couple of blocks in each district. And then we have the payment assessment money, which comes out of our capital improvement, a lot of money, that's about four million a year. We typically focus those on higher capacity streets, collectors and above. That is done through a five year assessment. We just completed a five year assessment that takes a look at a rating system for the streets and they grade them and they give us a five year plan of how we systematically knock those out over time. So we are now in year one of the new five year plan. If y'all would like to talk with me after this meeting, I'll share you what we've got, you know, compared for FY22 and for both courses and IMS, we have to share that. One of the other things I just wanted to chat with y'all about is if you have an issue, please let us know. And that issue can be anything. If you go to gptx.org, search bar report, you can report almost anything you can think of that the city has to do with. Whether from brush to potholes, animal services, code enforcement, all that stuff is right there. Please report that. Part of how we calculate or how we estimate which streets we're going to be doing next on our course end is complaint driven. So I have a lot of heavy complaints in a certain area, we're typically going to focus on that. Part of that program also includes water wastewater replacements. So if I've got a road that's in need of repairs, typically we're gonna take a look at the water wastewater just to make sure we knock that out while we're out there. I'd hate to go repave a road and have the water on the block because it's 60 years old. And believe it or not, we have a lot of infrastructure, especially the north part of Grand Prairie that was put in the 40s, 50s and 60s. So it's a constant battle to keep that updated, it's a constant battle to make those repairs. But we do with the money we're given and we're very gracious toward it, we try to get to it as quick as possible. But I would encourage you, you're never bothering us, to send us an email, get online and report those. Call me directly at 8066. We also have a dispatch that is on 24/7, 365, that's 972-237-8400. That last four is 8400. You call that and we'll talk to someone and they will take what you have to say. If it's water wastewater, we will dispatch someone immediately, depending on what the complaint is. If it's a pothole, that gets routed over to the street department and gets on their to do list. So please, you're not bothering us, that's what we're here for, that's what we're paid to do. So again, I appreciate you serving you guys and if I can ever be of service, please let me know.
Thank you so much, David, for your information. So the next person about to be issued this is our transportation director, Walter Schubert. Thank you, Walter.
Evening, everyone. So happy to be here, so glad to see you all here. It's always wonderful to see the citizens come out because they're interested in what's going on within the city. I am the director of transportation. Basically what that means is trying to keep the cars going, keep the vehicles going. To start off with, let me tag on to what the council was talking about, the RASHI program that's going on. They're still doing some background work, we still have some paperwork to go. But I know that that's gonna be very new to the city, I realize there's gonna be a lot of questions about it, don't worry about it. Because what we're gonna do is kick off a campaign to advertise the program, give you a lot of information about it. You should start saying that probably within the next two, three weeks, so you'll see a lot of information, go to the website. So that will be coming, so we're very, very excited about that. We got a lot of construction going on within the city, drive, I appreciate you realizing that. But I want to give you just a general overview of some of the projects that we've worked with our partners. We work with the Texas Department of Transportation, we work with North Texas Turnpike Department. Today, we're also doing progress with Karen County and Dallas County. So let's talk about some of the highway projects. I-30, where we're doing furnish roads. They're working on this for a while, from McCarran to Bell Lines completed. By now, they're working on furnish roads between Bell Line to George Bush 161. That project's been going on for a few years, probably has about three, four months left on it, and then that'll be complete. What we're working with Texas does, they have continuous furnish roads all the way through the city. Last gap is gonna be from George Bush to 360, I'm sorry. Right now, they're working on that part. The furnish roads from that are currently in design, it'll be going to environmental affairs over the next summer. So we're probably about two, about two years away from construction beginning. And then we'll have continued furnish roads all the way to I-30. I-20 furnish roads. Those have been under construction, anybody drives Carrier and I-20 will be happy when that is done. You've been there within the last month, so you're seeing a lot ramps start opening up and starting to open up. They're about a month away from being substantially complete. What does substantially complete mean? Means the ramps will be open, but there'll still be some construction going on. But as far as the general public, it'll be pretty much complete. So give us another month on that and then that one should be complete. George Bush, NCTA has been doing some work on the main lanes and on the southbound furnish roads. That is going to, the main lanes will be complete by spring of next year. Once that is complete, they're gonna come back and do some more work on the southbound furnish roads. Right around Pioneer Parkway is where I'm talking. They had to do a lot of work on retaining walls there last summer, they're gonna have to come back. If you had a chance to go through there, if you see the walls, they're not up to our standards of aesthetic pleasing. And that's because they had to do the walls first, and they had to concentrate on the main lanes. So they're gonna come back during the summer and finish up on the retaining walls on the southbound furnish roads. They also have some curb work there. So you'll see that, that should be complete summer or fall of 2022, then the main lanes be finished. Finally, the last project I want to talk about is a project we're working on with Dallas County, which is Kempis Road, towards the southern end of our project. That is between Carrier and, and maybe if they realize that. That project is actually going very well. A lot of construction in there. Temporary lanes are fairly narrowed to that era, which we're consistently working on. But you can see progress and that's what we strive for. I tell people many times, you love to see me come in, you love to see me leave. The north side of the lanes are complete. So if you're driving now, you will be driving on new concrete, so the traffic has been shifted over there. They're gonna work on those southbound lanes. We have about a year left on the project as a whole, but they are making very, very good progress on that. So bottom line, 30 is going well, I-20, we're pretty much complete on that. George Bush is going towards the tail end of it. And Carrier Parkway and I-20 is pretty much getting close to opening back up fully. And then we'll get out of Kempis and then we'll see what else we can tear up. Yeah, I realize from that question I can't, thank you all.
Thank you, Walter, for your information. So coming up next, we have our Parks Director, Wayne Strong. And after we have all of our people speak, then we'll accept questions, just let anybody that's coming through the event, we'll have questions at the very end.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. It is a good surprise, thank y'all for coming out. My name is Duane Strong, I'm the Director of Parks. I'm the Director of Fund. We've got a lot of good departments, but I have the best, I have the best job. You know, one thing that Parks does is follow the life. And our citizens work hard and we want to play hard also. Hey, there's never been a third time for work played in living Grand Prairie. So just a couple of things I want to cover with you. We're in the middle of Prairie Lights, I hope somebody, I hope everybody's been to Prairie Lights down at the lake. That opens at 6:00 PM from now until New Year's Eve. I encourage everybody to go after you're gonna go, go early. The lines are starting to get long, so go during the week or go early during the day and come out and see Prairie Lights. Dallas with Santa is Saturday, December the 11th at Charlie Peter. Jumping into the next year, Immokwe Day Parade and Celebration is Monday the 17th. At 10 AM starts at City Hall, ends up over by Doworth. Kids Fishing Day, Saturday, February the 12th at Mike Lewis. So there's a lot of special events going on. Nice thing is, is the Parks Department is wide open again, 2020 was bad, 20 we started opening up. So all the rest here, all the parks, everything is wide open, so we're ready to get everybody back in. All our special events have been very well attended, everybody was ready to get out and enjoy what we have. Some big projects that we have going on citywide is we've got the Turner Park. We're redoing the master plan, we're gonna start phase one construction at Turner Park. We're doing some park improvements at Fish Creek Linear Park. Link Creek Park and Rental Pavilion, we've got one right where the, basically where the 10 is at Prairie Lights. It's gonna be a nice rental pavilion that we're working on right now. Meet the Minia Park Phase One, we finished the master plan. Now we're working on a construction documents to do phase one of that construction. Hill Street Park Improvements, there's some things with lighting and some security issues there. And then the last thing I'll talk about is Tyree Master Plan and Phase One Construction. We got some nice funds from the state of Texas. We're able to do a master plan and start to do some of the, at least the phase one of the renovations for Tyree Park. And so we open for questions at the very end, thank y'all very much.
All right, so we will have our code compliance directors come up and speak to us, Mr. Ryan Simpson. Whatever y'all have to complain about, something that's wrong in the neighborhood, that's the guy right there, so don't copy calling.
My name is Ryan with the Police Department, how's everybody doing?
Hi.
How many of you guys have utilized the citizen cell service portal on our website to report a complaint? Okay. Gay Johnson talked about this just a little bit earlier, so I won't go over everything again. But we do have a citizen cell service portal on our city website, gptx.org. There's about 24 or so different types of issues that can be reported on there. We rely on those reports so that we're aware of issues throughout the city, whether it's code or street issue, parks or anything, you name it. We certainly have folks that are out and about the city, city employees every day, but we can't be everywhere. So we certainly rely on the feedback that you all get to us. So please utilize that, gptx.org, it's really easy to fill out complaints. I did one yesterday, just to kind of test it out, you can upload pictures, check the status of your complaint and all the various department contact information is there as well, if you want to talk to a person, you can certainly do that. I'll hand it over to Randy Reagan, he's our interim code manager, he's gonna give you all an update on short term rentals.
Short term rentals are ever known as Airbnb as well. Short term rentals, with the growth, all the growth in the city with new attractions, entertainment venues coming. These short term rentals are popping up all over Grand Prairie. Can't stop us from coming. Wish we could eliminate them, we can't. But we do require them to register. And that registration consists of them providing personal information and contact information. So if we have any issue with them, we can get those issues resolved ASAP. They are also required to pay hotel rental taxes. So they don't get a wage gap free, they have to pay the city taxes. The city has also gone a step farther in markets with a company called Post Compliance. Post Compliance tracks those short term rentals. And if they are not registered with the city, they let us know. We get with them, have them register, if they don't register, they have to, we cite them and we get them registered. So if you have a question rather during the short term rental in your neighborhood, call us, let us know, go on the way outside or call us, let us know about them. We can get them registered for you.
All right, so that's our last director that was speaking. And now we take on Q and A, if anyone has a question, please feel free.
Councilmember, do you want to send me to talk about the NPLASCO?
She says she'll answer any questions if somebody asks.
Yeah, just to know that if you've got any questions about the NPLASCO side, the Director of Public Health and Fire, Paul Simeon Mendez, is here for questions, if you've got those. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, City Manager. Question, I wonder?
Pablo, my name is Irene Middle and I just wanted to say thank you very much, Patsy, your engineer. And I'm like, which are your name, I know, I guess you know?
He's on, very close, he's on, he's on, yes, ma'am.
He's on. I really appreciate your willingness and your openness of having a town meeting like this. I think that's crucial, I love our city, I, people who know me know that I basically have a, just you just have to, no, I don't. And people who know me know that, I love this city. I, one thing that I love the best about this city is its heart. And I'm not gonna lie, I have a passion to make you, I do not go through you, but I'm very pleased. I've just, in that short time, everything that you've done and I really, really appreciate your willingness to be present and to be physical and to also to be cautious, which is, which is really nice. So anyway, I really appreciate you, and I just have one quick question for Rose. I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, I know the Corin Valley, where Rose over Curvy Creek Bridge, over Curvy Creek, they just finished the construction there, I was so excited when I saw it. I live on Rapid Club Drive and I was so excited when I saw that area. My husband was in my car along that area while we were walking the dog. I, Mayor Jensen, him appreciate this, he was, he was hit and he bounced in, his jaw was shattered. It was a horrible accident, but I very soon after that, a young man was killed on that strip as well. And there's been several other times of people being hit along that area. So when I saw that construction, it was, I was so excited. There's kids from elementary schools as well as middle schools as well as high school. All walking along the Perry, so I was excited. But then it was finished and there was only the one side of the road where it has any walkway for the pedestrians. So I was curious as to, is there anything that we can do to get a sidewalk along the east side of Corin Valley? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll get with our Parks Church, we'll talk, see if there's any park plans for that, if not, we can move this to. Typically, so we do have a sidewalk program, and I'll talk about that real quick. So we have a sidewalk program that is about a million dollars a year. And typically what we do with that million dollars, we typically don't do long linear projects. We do go replace or repair issues with our trip hazards, that's really what that money's meant for. Projects like that typically are bigger in nature, so we would look at trying to find a funding source. That would have to do with probably a CIP, a capital improvement project, anything that's long in linear like that. Anything that's long in linear like that would be, I mean, depending how long it is, it could be upwards of a half million dollars. I, I don't know what it is, I'm just saying, it would have to be studied, so I won't commit to it, but I can take a little look at it.
I'll be waiting.
Yes, ma'am. So before we continue the Q and A, whenever, I choose someone to ask a question, I'll make sure to bring with this mic. Because our people on Zoom aren't able to hear you without the mic, so I'll walk over and give you the mic. So, uh, we, we're, we're asking questions, please raise your hand.
Yeah, I have a question. Long-term resident, my name is Joe Ferrera. Anyway, with Prairie Lights, every year generating so much funds. My, my question is, I don't know who's in charge of those funds, but why can't we have a giant Fourth of July fireworks show on the lake? Like they did in previous years? And we should be utilized because the funds generated from Prairie Lights is quite a bit. The prices have gone up quite a bit.
Thank you, sir, great question. Uh, Steve Dyke, City Manager, I'll take this one. As many of you may know, we used to have fireworks display show down at the lake. Several issues with that, first of all, if you're ever down in the Fourth of July, fireworks display on the lake, it was, it was to the point of significant danger for ingress and degress for our first responders. Had we had a problem deep into that park, we were gonna have a lot of trouble getting police and fire in there. It became an unsafe environment. And then coupled with the fact that we also have fireworks show in Lone Star Park. And then we had other areas of the city that we had to give extra attention to, uh, throw, as far as illegal activity for what fireworks goes. So it's not a money issue. Now, your average fireworks show is gonna probably be at least thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, but it's not a money issue. What the mayor decided to do this past year, because COVID was rough on everybody, the city actually sponsored an extra fireworks night at Lone Star Park. You didn't have to actually go into the park to see it, you could see it from the outside. And the mayor wanted to do that to give the citizens something after all that they've been through because of COVID. So I think what we're going to continue to focus on is that Lone Star Park area for fireworks. We've got more parking, and we can safely take care of the attendees from a police and fire standpoint, so not a money issue. The lake just kind of became a dangerous location to do that because everybody was kind of packed in there, with a, a few ways to get in and out. So look, look to see, always see something at Lone Star Park. And if we have the opportunity to expand that like we did this past July, we will, sir, okay? Thank you. So that answers your question.
All right, well, just a question.
Very good, all the councilmen and citizen. I have lived up to our mission. I've been in Grand Prairie seventy-eight years. I was born to Dowworth at the age of seven. All the south was nothing but corn, cotton, and sugarcane. North Grand Prairie was nothing but Grand Prairie hot. I'm in the fabric of the region that live on the north side of Grand Prairie. But the landmark is three graves that's on the north side. Those are my ancestors, my grandmother's sisters. Now, I heard a lot of talk about the diversity of this city, which is good. I have witnessed South Grand Prairie growing from sugarcane, cotton, and corn. I have seen the growth of the north side. I have witnessed the growth of the southwest side. But I'm very disappointed that the new Dow Road Avenue Tower is led by a strong American. Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is good, the grass is taller than the street, taller than a kid in the earthquake. On Robles Street, Saint, Dirty, and Dirty, and all of the city is clean, beautiful, and universal. But when you go to the Dow, South Dow, the oldest of unity in this city and the most grand avenue of the city. When you go through all the part of Grand Prairie, you see beauty and progress. You go through Dow, where you see the beat need to grow and they change up. I was listening to public work directors, I was listening to city staff. I'm looking at the city how it grown and it's built. I was a year when it was no more than ten hours. I grew up in Dow, coming into city Grand Prairie, had to leave now at six o'clock in the evening. That's history. When you still see it growing from grass, corn, and cotton to university, Grand Prairie have grown tremendously. To the capacity that's had two hundred thousand more than grown. A lot of people have came here for their city, they're glad they're beautiful. But y'all have been dying, it's hard, Grand Prairie is great. A lot of cash flow, fantastic, I'm down. I'm very disappointed in the leadership of this city over the capability of Dow, because people is not involved. I'm a city company to make it grow and change. Now, the city staff that rise every day in the honor of the city and look, see was dirty and get it twisted. But who ride through Dow? Go down, Martin Luther King Boulevard. Grass is tall. Jesse developed the street and renamed it, street is a correction, why you need to go? Why is the street without land? Why is the Dr. Luther King's son and the Dow community? What's in Dow with us after that, my words itself? Dow with her, that is it. But y'all, other people do not utilize the right. What's happening again?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, go ahead, please finish. You bet.
Now, what I'm saying here, Dow is in, a lot of people are over here, they're running the city, I've been here seventy-eight years. I am a representative, everybody in eighteen cities council, someone that's in here, they know exactly what I am. Six members, two members, two terms, state representatives, congressmen and senators. I want to know, oldest of business accident Dallas County, the oldest in Grand Prairie, in a lot of ways. Only doors of opportunities, even in council, when the last member. Grand Prairie have grown tremendously. Focus on Dow, focus on Dow, city manager. You do bring us a lot of cancer back to you. Now, don't worry.
Well, I want, I wanted to say time for, say, that's a question, so.
Everybody will have a chance.
Well, let's, everybody, I, I understand, I just want to be respectful to the attendees, okay?
Hold on, I don't write the laws on people. First, long-term committed, I want today. I'm committed to say.
Yeah, please finish.
I want today. I want it. I want doors for you and your opportunity. I want doors for you and your opportunity. I wouldn't do this city with murder considered not as. City staff, let, I don't want to toss the toss, but let the toss in Grand Prairie. I directly coordinated with Grand Prairie's son. The record and point me, I heard someone talk about tournaments, uh, turn of the ball, that's why we're going, turn of the ball. I'm long-term committed to it, I want you to go to the staff member to relax there. Now, I won't play it off the mic, but I don't need to be rushed, I know. I have a right to speak in this city. It's no more than you're little, you're self, you're self, so we're just saying. I served over two, over two decades. Many doors and open doors of opportunities for all people in this city. I'm still saying focus on Dow, that's your right.
Mr. Harrison, I've known you eleven years, and I've never rushed you, okay? And I appreciate what you're saying, and, 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 we, we know too well, and I want to address your concerns, okay? And I want to practice in my saying, we can always do more. I'm not saying that we're perfect out there.
I know.
But I want to tell you what we are doing.
No one's perfect.
I want to tell you what we are doing, as you remember several years ago, I was chief, we started to adopt a street program. The police department, and the only street that we're doing every quarter, our police officers are out on W. Roberts, picking up trash.
I have to.
Yeah, you bet, you did it. And you know why we, you know why we're doing that? Because we want to stop the Dow community, that your police department cares. But also, the reason we're doing that, we wanted to get the community more involved. You all that are here tonight from Dow, from our all, and you're great citizens. But I want to get more citizens that are not involved in Dow. Another focus we've had, Mr. Harrison, and we're gonna continue, is infill, uh, you know, taking those old apartments, or those really old homes that are no longer inhabitable. Matter of fact, we've got a couple working on now, and through our housing department, building new homes. You've seen a lot of new homes coming up in Dow. So again, more and more of it down. The other thing you're gonna be proud of, and you told me before the meeting how proud you are that I'm your city manager. And I appreciate you saying that.
No, right.
We've got a new initiative called Clean Prayer. And what we want to do, not just for Dow, but for the entire city, is put a focus on cleanliness and orderliness, so the pride of the community goes to even our pride. And then finally, Mr. Harrison, uh, the other thing that we're doing, I've added a position to economic development. Uh, Marty mentioned that earlier, and that, that's gonna be for the purpose of focusing on redevelopment. There's not only Dow, but some other blighted communities, that we gotta go in there and try to make things look better in those older communities. Because I agree with you, sir, we're getting a lot of new, great things, which is awesome. But we need not forget about our older neighborhoods and our older parts of towns. So you have my pledge, and that's why we're adding a staff position to work on redevelopment. Now, here's where I need your help. You see the tall grass, you see somebody involved in whatever they shouldn't be doing, whatever the case may be. I want you to call us and report it. I need, uh, and you all here are not the ones I need to be talking to, but please tell your neighbors I want you to be engaged.
The tall grass is in the street.
Well.
That's the street flower.
Then we'll, we'll take, I've got, I've got our Assistant Director of Her Code back there taking notes.
It's curved, it's a street.
And, and I will tell you, Mr. Harrison, again, I'm gonna be honest with you. We probably spend more code resources right now in Dow than any other part of the city. So we are trying, and we are working hard, but I, what I'm saying is, please, don't wait, don't feel like you have to wait till a town hall meeting. You're, we want to know, if you're seeing something in your neighborhood, wherever you live, folks, it doesn't look good, let us know. I can promise you, you call us, unlike other cities that may be larger, you're gonna get somebody out there, and you're never bothered. So thank you for your long-term residency in our city, I know you're a part of your family. I appreciate your comments, and we're gonna work hard to help, okay?
With the bro, and the city had cars on every corner. City bought our cars on every corner.
Thank you.
We'll come back.
Oh, okay, no problem.
We have somebody in power there.
Yeah, thank you. I'm responsible for organizing this program, thank you. My name is Nikala. I own the property on Dowworth Street by, not West Seventh Street. On that very junction, it's like a trap of motorist. Wow. Because I work there, my business is right on that property. There are several accidents recorded on that junction. Minimum in a, in a quarter, minimum of three or four. One is too many, two is too much, three in a quarter is too much, way, way too much. And so I don't know if our police officer have the record to pass the street to make a decision about what has to be done on that junction. It is very, very, uh, uh, each time from this year, from this beginning, about three months ago, I started recording the accident that are happening on that junction, I have to be sitting in the teachers, when, whenever I'm in the office. And so I'm personally concerned because it would be me or any of us dead. And I, I, I hope that never happens when it was. Uh, old people, young people, they have accident there. Uh, but the point, maybe, uh, we're quite, that has to be shabby lights on that junction. Or it was the client, there are so many, that's about five, six years ago. And we have to think about it. And so it, and there has to be, will, will, and will forward on that junction. So I'm trying this to the Congress, uh, so the city manager, or the city, to look critically, about what has to be done, before we consider these lights. In that junction, thank you.
Would you, a staff member, why don't you come up here to the front to speak, so I can get you on Zoom, okay? Go ahead, walk.
Just wanted to confirm, the street was Northwest Seventh, and was it Dow? Yes. Okay. Generally speaking, what we do, and what we're gonna do in this intersection, we go back, we look at the accident data that's been recorded. We also do what's called a engineering analysis, to look at the different options, which we're gonna do in this intersection. That's what we do when, when we give reports of that, and as City Manager Steve Dyke said earlier, when you, when you see these type of investments, we need to know about it. Uh, so report it to us, that way we can go back and do the analysis to see what kind of options we have, to, to help out.
But he wants to.
All right. All right, get everybody, go right over there.
Where is it? Good evening, all. My name is Rosalind Chain, I'm the owner of my registered childcare home called Pooch's House Twenty Four, and I'm open for twenty-four seven. I've been operating for eleven years now. My concern, I sent a letter, uh, to consummate a local and consummate local marriage, may I repeat that? Okay, um, the letter is, my concern is about the city of, the city of Grand Prairie ordinance, Article Five, Section thirteen dash ninety-two. Number three, licensed childcare homes historically known as group daycare homes are prohibited. According to the State of Texas Regulatory Agency, second four seven, block one one five. What is a licensed childcare home? It states a childcare home licensed as a group daycare at the location other than a primary caregiver's own residence until agreement is no longer valid. Moving forward to year twenty twenty-one, all group daycares are no more than our system. A licensed childcare home is licensed to the primary caregiver that provides care in the caregiver's own residence. The same as the registered childcare homes, seven four seven nine one one three. Unlike, unlike the historically group home child cares, licensed and registered childcare homes must not exceed twelve kids at any given time. When with the city of Grand Prairie ordinance, Article Five, Section thirteen dash ninety-two, number three, the amendment. It has been updated by the State of Texas Regulatory Agency, and thirteen cities surrounding Grand Prairie has licensed childcare homes in the primary caregiver's residence, same as the minimum standards. And knowing it is not the same as historically group daycare homes. I have the registered childcare home getting expected every year, same as the licensed childcare home. Registered childcare home providing Grand Prairie have received government subsidies, getting expected yearly, as the same as licensed childcare home providers. It's limiting government subsidies to help the communities in Grand Prairie. Military families are mostly affected by this ordinance, along with registered childcare providers. Grand Prairie has been expanding over the years, and, and it's great, it's, it, it is expanding. We also realize it's expanding too. We can't fully receive, we can't fully receive government funding because of the categories, which are very the same. In order, in order to enhance or stimulate economic growth, it's important in this time that the community receives quality care from the registered childcare providers that are limited in the city of Grand Prairie. My request is for the city of Grand Prairie. My request is for the city of Grand Prairie to amend the ordinance, Article Five, Section thirteen ninety-two, number three, to allow licensed childcare providers to operate in their own residence, the same as registered homes. President Biden, Bill Clinton, is here. It's a new day. Please don't leave us behind. We want the lights of the apartment numbers to the pre-teen too. Because once that come through, all three and four-year-olds is going to be out of childcare homes, childcare centers. We are overqualified. We are overqualified. So I have a bachelor's degree. I have a CDA. I am a member of Texas School. I'm Texas student certified. I am Texas Rock and Stone certified. I have a high-quality home. But shared homes and licensed homes, this is the minimum standards. They're in the same, they share the same minimum standards, because it's the same. The occupancy is twelve. We don't need code and streets to come in to develop for a licensed childcare home. Because the occupancy is the same. It's twelve kids. Now, if it was a center, yes, we would need code and streets to come in, but we don't need that. We just need the word and change, and we need that law, that historical ordinance to be updated. And can the childcare provider stand up, please? If that's here, the childcare owners in Grand Prairie, can y'all stand up? And we are here. We're here. We want to be a part of the movement too. It's our time too. We want to help the people that's opening up these businesses. We want to help their families. We want to provide childcare to their families. They don't want to go wait in all the town halls. Mass field. We can be right here in Grand Prairie, providing all of that care.
One of the things that we're not considered that was that the city of Grand Prairie has spent this budget, both to have to deal with fire and stasis, but we have to get the gases and stuff to it too. So the apartments that are placed on us through the city are structured in each other's city. But we're still all in this business to their registered home. And also, this city is not just one of retirees. There's a lot of non-couples that get in here, and they want quality care, and we provide it there.
Do you have a question about registered family homes?
I want to know.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'd like to leave you.
Okay, great. Well, my name is Cindy Fernandez. I'm the Director of Public Health and Environmental Quality. And it is my staff that comes out to all of your homes and to the licensed childcare facilities we have here in the city. Thank you for what you do. It's a very valuable service. We take it very seriously. That's why we have very strict standards, to make sure we're protecting the kids in the city. We were forwarded your letter by the councilman, and staff is currently researching your very thorough letter that spoke to many statutes and save all. And so we will, we want to make sure we give you a complete answer and that we look into everything we need to before we give you a response. So I'd be happy to give you my card, and you can contact me directly, and I can give you updates on where we are. Great. Thank you.
I'd like to allow the gentleman in the red cats to ask this question. What I would like to make this a bit more orderly, and so we can wipe down this mic where anyone asks a question. And so we can all, everyone that has a question, please line up over here on the left side. So we have a orderly session as well, to let everyone that does have a question be able to ask that question. So thank you all so much. You can mind the mic. About a long way.
I don't need a mic. This is directly to the park director. Sir, welcome to Grand Prairie. I want you to know that I don't want to let you here. But I would like to inform you of something that I hope that you will be able to honor. Because a couple of things have transpired with you, made me nervous. Number one, Rick Carroll and I discussed the homecoming of Charlie Taylor when it's time. I had a discussion with Mayor Eamon, and I brought it to his attention that we had no statues at that time. They both agreed that they would help to bring Charlie home at the end of his life, since he was the first, famous person to come here, and that we would bury him in the cemetery on Beltline. Hopefully, we can see that proven. I'd like for you to contact them to verify, because at the time, I approached the mayor about it. First of all, I'm councilman, former councilman. We had no statues in the city of Grand Prairie, and I thought it would be nice for Charlie to be the first one. I think Charlie Eamon somehow thought I was talking about him. Because we got a Charlie Eamon statue right there.
Yeah, we did.
But I remember him playing with the Redskins. I do remember number forty-two, Charlie Taylor, Rookie of the Year, nineteen sixty-four, at a time when the Dallas Cowboys lived right up the street from him. So he had to pretty much watch his step every day. Were it not for the fact that he was at home, he might have been in a little trouble, because the Dallas Cowboys didn't like Charlie Taylor. And that's where the rivalry began. Mel Renfro, Dallas Cowboy. Charlie Taylor rose up from Rookie of the Year. Charlie Taylor beat out Mel Renfro. And they don't let each other forget that. But I would like to put that burden on you and on my mayor, to make sure that we're taking care of him here, okay? And I do represent the Taylor family. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I just had a question for Councilman Jonathan. You know, the people in the developments that also are in the big relax will be out, December the fourteenth. A lot of these people still don't have a place to go. I talked to Tammy Chan, and she was saying that she usually helps the people that are already on the streets for seven days. She's giving out vouchers, but there's no guarantee that they have a place to actually go. You know, she can refer them, but that's it. So that's going to be a big problem, because those are the people that be feed and help, and it's ripe for Christmas. Do you have anything that you know about where these people are going to be placed? Or will they?
Thank you for that question. Okay. I will allow our deputy city manager, Yulio, to respond.
Well, thank you for that question. Insofar as the Elavista Hotel was reserved, that was a negotiated sale. And by having a negotiated sale, the city does not have any responsibility. It is the responsibility of, you know, to ensure that the property is cleared, residents relocated, and the health that we locate.
I'm just letting you know it's not happening.
Right. Well, we have committed that we will not close, and they will not make a cent until they've taken care of the residents that are there.
Because they call me because of my organization. That's the only way I know. And I'm just saying it's still be a problem, because a lot of those people, families, not just individuals, families and children, they won't be, they don't have a place to go.
And we understand that. And because we understand that, that's why we've taken the position that we have. And we want to make sure that they take care of the relocation of those families prior to us closing the deal.
Great question. We gave them an extended closing period to make sure nobody was not equally relocated. I just got a text about five thirty this evening, and Bill doesn't know about it, from Danny Patel, who's one of the owners over there. He said they have all been successfully relocated, but we're going to verify that. And I just got that text this evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, great question.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Lucas. I was born sixty-five years ago in Dallas. Sixty-five years old. Chief, please come. I'd like the chief of police to tell you some things about the policing that goes on in Grand Prairie. He don't allow racial profiling. Chief, come over here. This guy has shown me something that we have never had in a police chief in the history of Grand Prairie. I'm sixty-five years old, and never had... He don't allow racial profiling. This man don't. He don't tolerate. If you're having a problem with one of his offices, I want anybody here to know you can talk to this man here. He has talked to me.
Andy, you go look at your back, you're lying.
I'm a transplant. So we've been in Texas since nineteen ninety-eight. Moved to Grand Prairie in two thousand and seven, so our daughters are here that are going through Grand Prairie on public schools now. My question is, I heard a lot about the development that's going on. I guess single-family homes, but I wasn't clear about where we stand on multi-family homes. And the reason I ask that question, apartments or whatever you're going to call them, is as you bring in more people, especially with apartments, you're going to bring in more families, which is good. But we're going to have to educate the kids. Right now, we can't put them in the current structure of the schools that we have, because in the classroom, they're all crowded. But then, if you decide to build other schools, why do you pay for that? Pay for that with school tax. So I don't, I know I haven't been to, this is my first meeting, so I don't know what the discussion has been on the multi-family homes, the coordination we have to build additional schools if we look five, ten years down the road. Also, I haven't met you personally, but I want to congratulate you. I did well for you. So I want to congratulate you. Also, to the police chief, I want to thank you for the program that you talked about, the COOP program. During the election, a lot of people talked about defunding the police, and they got the wrong impression of what that meant. Some of that, most of that was the allocation of funds for programs such as this. So I want to point that out, and we committed to chief for that in the police department. And if Grand Prairie is the first city to have a program such as this, it's something that I think should be advertised. If there's a social media network for the city of Grand Prairie that can put that out, because it's something that other cities can see, Grand Prairie can take the lead on it.
Thank you for that kind of word, sir, and mentioning COOP again one more time. I want you to tell everyone to know, I agree with you. We have advertised this. I also meet with every single chief in the Dallas Fort Worth area, particularly the major city chiefs. I went to school with Chief Mills in Fort Worth. I saw Eddie Garcia from Dallas. I am constantly talking about COOP, and I'm begging them to steal our program. So it is not a proprietary program. I love that it's got a grand priority seal on it. By the way, this program was, I would love to take credit, but I believe in giving credit for credits too. This was an ask on behalf of your city council. Your council wanted us to take another look at this and do more on this. And so it was their request for us to dig in a little bit deeper, and this is what we came up with. So I appreciate the credit. I'd love to sit up here and take the softball, but you're elected officials to do this one, all right?
Thank you, Chief, for what you've... I'll answer a question that he brought up regarding the public schools in Grand Prairie. So to give a little background on Grand Prairie, our city is very unique, because we're in three counties, expanding into four counties, where in Dallas, Tarrant, Ellis, and Johnson County. Our students go to about six school districts. Hardest Side ISD, Childs Winston, some go to Dallas ISD, Grand Prairie ISD, Irving ISD, Cedar Hill ISD. I think a few have been both in about... So actually, seven. There's some different colleges both in as well. That just explains that as we are having development, and we are growing as a city, two hundred thousand right now, possibly in the next ten to ten years, maybe two fifty or two seventy, if I will. I think that the schools are coming, because a lot of this growth is happening outside of the Dallas County region of Grand Prairie, Texas. So we're having a lot of growth in Chad County, a lot of growth in the Ellis County region, and we're expanding into Johnson County. So I think as we continue to grow, our school will be covered, to the fact we're in just so many different school districts. We have a very diverse city in many different aspects. So that's why I would say to that question. But I will speak with other GPIZ trustees that serve on the board of trustees to see if it's possible for us to bring another high school or middle school into the GPIZ. But as of right now, I think we're good for now, but definitely have, we can still grow and then get better. So thank you for your questions, sir.
Okay, no, no, no more speaking.
Oh, no more speaking. No, no more speaking.
Hi, my name is John Gole, and I'm just down in Grand Prairie, the county board. Love Grand Prairie. I've seen a lot of big changes. And I do agree with that gentleman. I just strongly agree with that gentleman right there, what he's talking about, because I know somebody that's situation with that COOP, dealing with the, you know, the situation that I see, the friends and family member that needs that. So I just want to point that out. I do, if anything, I'm here for you too.
Hey, as soon as this earlier, my name is Kenneth Sanders. I'm the Justice of the Police Judge, who represents the Tarrant County Portion of Grand Prairie. I thought I would take an opportunity now to talk to you about rental assistance. You know, right now, we're still in the midst of this pandemic, and a lot of people have been adversely affected by it. And for those residents who live in Tarrant County, the best source for rental assistance is to go to a website called GetRentHelp.com. Once you get in that website, it's very simple. GetRentHelp.com. That website will point you to the best form of rental assistance for Tarrant County landlords and tenants who are needing a rental assistance. You know, you've probably heard a lot about a program called the Texas Rent Realy Movement. That's what most people have heard about. That program is really geared towards more smaller rural counties in Texas. Most of the large counties like Tarrant County, and Dallas County, and Harris County, they have rental assistance programs, who are more efficiently ran than that larger Texas Rent Realy. Unfortunately, I've seen a lot of activity get evicted, because they utilize the Texas Rent Realy program, and it's very slow, and it's very cumbersome. And so my advice, if you are a landlord or tenant, and you know someone who is in need of rental assistance, who lives in Tarrant County or have property in Tarrant County, they should go to GetRentHelp.com. That is the most efficient way of getting rental assistance. Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Do you have any more questions?
City officials, General. I have a question. I just have a simple question. I've been in Grand Prairie for about sixteen years now. And that's in the city of, I used to work in that school. I mean, I don't say so. I've seen Mansfield go to, Mansfield had a single hospital, Methodist Hospital, and they're adding two hospitals. Grand Prairie is a city of over two hundred thousand individuals, and they need medical care. My question is this. Why does Grand Prairie not have a hospital? Why do the people of Grand Prairie... who go to Argentine or Mansfield or Dallas and add to the revenue of those cities? What makes it impossible for Mans, for Grand Prairie not to have a hospital?
Great question. I would love to answer this question, but I have a man that I think have much more nuance to answer.
Well, I was certainly going to do my best. You've got a great, a great question, and it's certainly one that we've discussed for a long time here. Part of the challenge that Grand Prairie has, you may know, we do have one vacant hospital. We're actually working with the people that buy and talking to some people that are intrigued with it. I think it's important, you know, our mayor and council have made it very clear to the owners that we want to make sure there is a qualified hospital operator behind it, not just somebody who tries to open up like the previous owner did, you know, individual operated and not necessarily certified. We came to, especially in the case of previous group, they did not have relationships with the providers. So, you couldn't get insurance if you went there. And that was important, because that didn't help that hospital go. So, we'll continue to point out to the new owners, that needs to be different. The other challenge that we've got is, you may know, we've got hospitals sprinkled all around us. So, that makes it tough for any new hospital group to come in and say, hey, I want to invest in building. We continue to talk to all the major hospital groups and discuss with them the desire that we like to have, certainly see a hospital be in Grand Prairie. We're not going to quit, but that makes it tough, because we do have them all around us. I think we've got a chance in getting something in that former hospital that will give us time for me to continue to work with the owners and our group is taking a real close look at it. Chief Five probably can tie it and just do.
Exactly. When Marty got here, I think that's the very first question charged us.
I wish you a good night.
We got to have a hospital. So, I sit on the Methodist Hospital, and I've asked this very question. Why cannot Grand Prairie have what Mansfield and Dallas and now Big Oak did have? They've actually done their studies off of our major highways, and because we're surrounded by Level One and Level Two centers in Mansfield, Dallas, Irving, Arlington, because we're surrounded, it's very financially difficult for them to invest five hundred billion to build a hospital. Plus, the big box hospitals, they're a nightmare. You're going to see surgical centers and other things pop up like Baver's gotten wiped, like Darren Hoodwood. The smaller little centers, you will rarely see a big hospital built in our line type of year right now. It'll be the smallest. So, we're hoping the vacant hospital, the new owner brings something that we're proud of, but we just don't know. It is on our radar.
Just a couple of things. Being a platform, I'd like to know what steps you take in terms of things that will cost. Frankly, how do you plan to increase funding for schools? And why is it necessary? I'll have my text bill, I should say outrageous text bill, goes to the schools.
Thank you so much for that question. It's a very valid question, it's a great question, and I think it's a question I need to answer honestly. Honestly, whenever I was, whenever I was first elected to city council back in June, I had a conversation and a discussion at a meeting with our mayor, Ron Jessup, sitting in the current city manager, Steve Dye, outgoing city manager, Mr. Tom Hart. And they asked me when I was first elected, Junior, what's the first thing that you want to get accomplished here in Grand Prairie? What is your first top priority? And I told them, my first goal is to listen so I can learn. Why is that my first goal? Because I cannot become the leader, excuse me, I cannot become the leader that I really want to become by coming into city council and telling them, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do, without listening to those that came before me, without being willing to learn and gain that institutional knowledge that those that have sat on the city council, and those are currently sitting on the city council, and that those that serve in our city government that can provide me so I can become the best leader that will provide the best services to the city. So, I told them, I want to listen, I want to learn, I want you guys to guide me in the direction that will allow me to gain that knowledge so I can become a great public servant. So, of course, when I was running for city council, I had preconceived notions and beliefs that I could do something like this, it sounds like I don't counsel. But I learned that public service is, it's progress, right? But progress takes time. I can't come in and put my foot down and say, so what we're going to do, we're going to do like this, we'll do it right now. That's not how it works, Sam. Without leaders like John Lopez, I don't know if Mike Niboski is still here, Kurt Johnson, Steve Dye, the mayor, I can ingame that knowledge to be able to serve us. So, I've been on council for six months now, and we've accomplished a lot of things. We've got a hell of a lot of more stuff to do, a lot of great work to get done, and it will get done by the grace of God if we're able to do it. And I truly believe with y'all's support, with all the residents that support me, support the city council, and hold us accountable, that's how we get that done.
So, my question is, why do the police go through the red lights and traffic jams?
They shouldn't. So, sometimes, I didn't give you an honest answer. Sometimes, people you love are in a really, really bad place, and they need help really, really fast because there's someone that might be there trying to hurt them. And the police officers that work for you want to get there as fast as they can safely to protect you, the people you love, the people that are around you. So, sometimes, they have to go a little bit fast. Sometimes, they have to look left and right, go through red lights to help save the day. That's the best answer I got, man.
All right, I know it's eight o'clock. Let me have one more question. If you have an answer to you. So, we have one more question for Father John.
Good afternoon. My name is Patsy Ray, and I have been in Grand Prairie since nineteen fifty-six. I don't have a question, Junior. You know, mother just gives advice. That's who I am. I like what I see. And if you love this city like you say you do, I'm shaking my finger because I'm a momma. You will come to city council meetings. You will be here. Everything that the mayor's office says in the pipeline that's happening in this city. If you want to be a good citizen of this city, do your part. We won't get anything done unless we work together. We've got to have fellowship together in order to make Junior look good, make the city council look good, make the Chief of Police look good. If you ask Miss Ray, and I'm not writing, I know every one of them in the city. Because when it comes to attending the city council meeting, now, you all may tell me you go on the internet to do it, but you come to city council meeting in person is what they need to see. Not just when you've got a problem, but every time they have city council meeting, which is twice a month, the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of the month. I worked for the city for seven years under Chief Dye as a crossing guard. I got tired of the classroom because I can't be grandma in the classroom, but I can be grandma at the crosswalk. I encourage you citizens of Grand Prairie. And yes, Delworth is not the most kept clean place, but there is a group that's working in the community who want to make it look better. We've got a lot of people moving in. I am the present chair of Delworth. I'm the election judge of Delworth. So, I know what's going on in my neighborhood, but I can cut my yard and my alley. The alleys look bad in Delworth if you come through and if you take a look at them. Why? Because the property owner has not been enforced. The city council grandfathered the alleys into our properties, and we're responsible for them. So, Mr. Collins, who is the director of code, these guys come out, they check, they're doing the best that they can, but they need the citizens to help them too. And they need to be, citizens need to be informed that we keep the alleyways clean. Your city is what you make it, people. And if you love each other, it's going to show. Compassion is God. So, we've got to do our best. Walter, you're doing a good job. Gay, I thank you for my two streets. Chief, I love you. Where is my, my mayor? Love you too.
I love seeing you there, sweetheart.
Remember what I said? I'm going always, I'm going always leave. I am the chair of the library board for the meeting tonight. So, people, take your place and be responsible. Come to city council meeting. Don't let me sit there on the sixteenth if nobody's there really.
Thank you, Miss Ray. We love you. So, one thing I did want to touch on, and this is a new initiative that we are exploring, has to do with alleys. Unfortunately, some of the ones in that were not paid when the development was done. So, one thing we're going to explore is alley either improvements or maintenance. We don't know what that entails yet. It's a brand-new initiative that Mr. Hills and Mr. Dye missed cash my group to work on. So, we're going to work on that and come up with a plan. Maybe it's powder plan, maybe it's a junior plan, maybe it's mowing, maybe it's paving, maybe it's street maintenance. I don't know what it is yet, but we are in development. So, that will be on the list of, you can evaluate those alleys.
Well, we have to see able bunnies at the lucky garden that I care. And we need to, if I need to get the gardeners to come, we need to get some volunteers to help some of the seniors cut their portion of the alley.
Okay.
And I'll talk to my auntie about saying if we can get some of the young men from the recreation family to help with cutting the alley. We don't want you to do it by yourself. You don't have to do it by yourself.
I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Spending two hours here with us to learn about what we're doing in the city, to ask questions. Very grateful you all being here. Thank you for your support. Around these last six months have been a blessing. This is an honor of my twenty-two-year-old life so far. So, I'm very grateful for your support, and I'll write this issue with my email. I have business cards in the back, so please make sure to grab one, have my phone up on it, email, text me, copy, email. Thank you all for coming.